Concerns of security there, you know, what keeps them in the end, some of these, some of them go, you know, gets pulled over or whatever, you know, nephew goes in there and messes with the day, what is, what kind of security is on that side? I trust those. I don't get that. That makes sense.
Yeah, uh.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I can see it all, uh, my uncle, but it's gonna be hard for them to know that right then and there because, well, what, what we should have, uh, 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 occasionally in, then it opened up all.
It's anonymous, like if it's all data, it's just street through.
I think that's what it's like.
The back of the door, the security. This is.
I'll let you know when we're.
I'm just curious.
Okay.
I didn't get me. For putting a D sign.
Have a pen?
Go ahead, yes, sir do.
Okay. Do you remember the item?
Uh, no. You, you can fill it in if you want.
Yes, I will.
Okay, I'll just sign here.
Hey, hey, man, thinking.
Okay.
How you doing today?
I'm good, how you doing?
Hey, man.
No, it's the third, and then I guess tonight who's right?
What's that?
For the third and for tonight.
Yeah, that number F, it's items F.
How are you?
Okay, thank you so much.
That was right here.
Long time, yeah.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller. I think he took my. Wait a minute. Okay.
My friend is very close to where the road is, and the road as far as I know, it's only prescribed this month. So, I don't want to say. Um, I want you to stay at Y, I want you to have your three.
Yeah, Coach, that, I tell you, some of the things we really hate, let people go on, but we, we DUIs and stuff like that, drugs, felonies, put some railboards, you know, but, uh, some of these other things, you know, this guy, you need to go, go to town, you know. Maybe, you know, some little small, suspended license, you know, and that guy may have maybe one suspended license or something else, he was right to take a picture of him. Get a good address.
And they get lifted in when they come to court, so it's, just the whole process is just happening.
Well, I mean, it just, you know.
My way you want to do.
Listening, reading. Just take a break. Officer, if you're, you want to take a break, you can be the one we, you okay with. What you don't like, picture. Trim something where you're doing, where you're doing now, there's also get back.
Sure, sure. My concern is that I was.
I guess, you know, make sure that the company is the area.
I apologize for yelling, is it going to be in staff reports?
So, a lot of it helped us.
Okay, is that what you wanted, Mr. uh, Madam Chair? What she said? Okay.
Some of them, we don't, we don't.
I've gotten a few comments that they're ready to get up out of here tonight, because we stayed so long Thursday, people don't want to stay, I understand.
The coke gone, you know. Well, the whole coke.
That's what you're supposed to have.
And Kevin. Doing good, you gonna.
Oh, thank you so much, I appreciate it, Kristen.
You can go home. Yeah, you can, since I'm here now. See, I, I was here, I see you're home here now, I may be late tomorrow. Oh, well, you ain't gonna be, yeah, tomorrow, we got.
There's no score in the first quarter, they just.
Stan.
Just got a touchdown a few moments ago.
There was a war. Hey, we getting our, uh, video money, video camera money. I think you did.
Mayor and I were just talking about that.
This is, he's gonna do this.
This is for Thursday, from Thursdays?
Um, well, that's on the schedule as well, um, so I'll send up the service and please service the house.
Oh, that's, yeah, I was, I was gonna.
Oh, the money we paying him, that means.
That's right, okay, so I'm, I'm filling in for the mayor on Thursday, you, what do you, do you need something for me for Tuesday, Wednesday?
Uh, please.
And then, you know, we.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna show. I like to go to the.
But you know, it, it, we got another guy that certified East.
Um, and then, for Thursdays, do we have any words?
Martin, you know, yeah, so, I don't know, he hadn't, because it looks like sometime it may be our advantage, because in, in the long run, it may save us, okay, if it's your, 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 uh, what is it, your contract is five thousand dollars, he can get you over here to, you go to work.
It's not our money.
Yeah.
It's six oh five, if we can start making our way to our seats, please, the elected body, so we can get started with our meeting. Thank you so much. A call to order, the City of Douglasville City Council meeting for tonight, which is our voting meeting, and, um, it's December the seventh, and, uh, we'll start out with our invocation, which will be done by Pastor Darius Elder, Small Groups Pastor of Chapel Hill Church. After that, we'll have the Pledge of Legions, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, City Council member Terry Miller, please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We know that leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient, and those are honesty and courage. Those gathered have the duty of humility, integrity, and public service. They've all earned the right to be here tonight by winning the trust of the people of Douglasville, so we pray for a meeting that fosters character and conviction. We pray for listening ears and understanding and goodwill. We pray for speech with clarity, with charity and restraint. We pray that you would give a spirit of continued service. Remind our council that they are stewards of your authority. Give them to be the leaders your people need. Help this collective to see the humanity and dignity of the, all those who disagree, and to treat all persons with reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, we ask that you sanction this meeting with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love, amen.
Pledgees, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, for leading us in the pledge, and we appreciate, um, that thought-provoking invocation, Pastor, uh, Elder, thank you so much. I'll go through the announcements and presentations, and then we'll start our council meeting with the agenda that's printed and that it will be on the screen. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville's City Council Voting Meeting tonight, um, we do not have any council members online, is that correct? Assistant, okay, thank you so much. And so, we'll just go forward with, um, still knowing that we are in emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of the coronavirus and to reduce the risk of COVID nineteen illness that is an, annotated on the official code of Georgia, section fifty dash fourteen dash one G. Um, in that code section, you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, which allows governments to meet by teleconference, so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software, as shown on the city's webs- website describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. We are limited, uh, to fifty members or less in the chambers at one time, in compliance with Governor Kemp's order, um, as we are, uh, finding a, fighting a pandemic for, um, and for the coronavirus. Okay, the instructions to the public is all applicants and participants be advised that this meeting will allow public comment at the end, during, um, comments from citizens and delegates, if you'd like to talk to us, if there's something that is not being covered, um, on the agenda, as long as it's remain to city business. I'll go over protocol for the meeting, and then we will proceed with the meeting, it's a little bit different from last week, because at this meeting, um, it'll go a little faster because we're voting, but I'll ask that you would still pay attention to the instructions. This is a regular meeting, uh, where council agenda items were presented for discussion last Thursday. If the business you're here for, um, and wish to speak, we'll ask that if it's not an agenda item, you will discuss that under comments from citizens and delegates, and, um, just these protocol issues, I ask that you would, of course, keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. Only one person speaking at a time, uh, please do not disrupt or, um, take out of order anything that's going on in the meeting that will be, um, be disruptive, as I said. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept comments on public, comments during required public hearings, and the agenda items will, will take place as of following. Um, we did talk about on last Thursday that there are twenty minutes, if you have a concern about an issue, twenty minutes for those in favor, twenty minutes for those in opposition, for those zoning, uh, matters, and each person has five minutes. We'll ask that you would be gracious enough not to repeat the items that you brought, um, on last Thursday, we will accept comments, but they would, should be new information. Myself and council members were probably asked clarifying questions, if we, um, need to ask you any, any, uh, comments that you're bringing forward. This is not a question and answer format or debate, we're just here to receive the information. We are very interested in what you have to say, and we'll take all of that into consideration. The committee chair will go through, um, any other comments that he or she may have, and they'll make their recommendations for us to vote on those items. So now, we will move forward with the agenda as presented. Oh, if you have electronic devices, I apologize, please put those in silent mode or turn those off so they won't be disruptive during the meeting, and when you come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, uh, there is a form that you should have filled out, it's on the table, you can give that to the city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, and if you have any materials that you want to distribute, please give those to the city clerk as well, and, uh, she will distribute those to us. Okay. So now, I open the floor for minutes, uh, the minutes of the legislative work session of November twelfth, twenty twenty, and the regular meeting and executive session of November sixteenth, twenty twenty, I open the floor for a motion to approve. The minutes.
A move.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, it's been properly moved in second to approve the minutes as presented. Do any council members see any corrections or, uh, any concerns, you have any concerns about the minutes as they are printed, uh, presented to us? Thank you, I don't see any, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are unanimously approved. Now we'll move on to item number six, which is the consent agenda. Getting it loaded up. Thank you so much. I open the floor for a motion to the, uh, approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you so much, Councilmember Adams, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis, it's been properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any corrections, deletions, or any concerns about the consent agenda from council members? Thank you, I don't see any, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is unanimously approved. Now I'll move on to item number seven, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have three items under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Yes, sir.
And the first is to adopt a resolution amending the twenty twenty tax plan and clarifying and adjusting the two thousand thirteen tax policy. Mr. Chris Pumphrey, um, gave us a exquisite presentation on that, and so I turned to him if he has any additional information or, uh, changes or additional notation he'd like to present to the council this time.
He made it very understandable for, in layman's terms, for us to understand.
Something like me to understand, and I was quite.
Yes, sir.
I definitely don't want to mess it up, then.
Mr. Pumphrey.
Good evening, everyone, Chris Pumphrey, Douglas County Economic Development Authority, eighty-five twelve Bowden Street, Douglasville. Um, thank you for, for having, uh, this on the agenda this evening, uh, as I mentioned on Thursday night, no, no additional information to add, but just to kind of restate, and we made two changes into the policy, one was to kind of codify the fact that a project that is a construction in process, um, would be assessed at a seventy-five percent value up until the point in time that they have completed that construction and received the certificate of occupancy. The second thing was to just, uh, fix the allowing for the point, a point to be awarded for a company paying fifteen dollars an hour. Um, we had set that rate in twenty thirteen, when the average annual hourly wage was roughly fifteen dollars an hour. We have now changed that to basically say, the point is awarded for a company having an average wage that is, uh, equal to or greater than, uh, the prior calendar year's, uh, county average wage, so those are the two changes.
Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey. Well, I would like to place item twenty dash six one two in the form of a motion for approval at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Davis, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash six one two with a brief, uh, synopsis as given by the Chair of the Economic Development Authority, Mr. Chris Pumphreys. Do we have any questions or comments from council members before we vote? Thank you, I don't see any, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash six one two is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the next item is to adopt a resolution approving Project Douglas's participation in the city's revised twenty twenty tax plan and authorize the mayor to sign a related tax incentives agreement with that corporation, the Development Authority of the City of Douglasville, the Douglas County Board of Assessors, and the Douglas County Tax Commissioners. Mr. Pumphrey, any additional or altered information in any way?
Nothing, nothing addition to, to Thursday night.
That being the case, then I would like to place item twenty dash six one three in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash six one three. Do we have any, uh, further discussion as relates to this item from council members? Thank you, I don't see any, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash six one three is approved unanimously.
Mayor.
You're welcome.
Our last item under the Economic Development Committee is to adopt a resolution approving J H O G A dash one Investment LLC's participation in the city's revised twenty twenty tax plan and authorize the mayor to sign a related tax incentives agreement with that company, the Development Authority of the City of Douglasville, the Douglas County Board of Assessors, and the Douglas County Tax Commissioners Office. Um, Mr. Pumphrey, once again, anything additional to add?
Just to make sure that everyone knows that J H O G A hyphen one is a single-purpose entity for Bang Energy.
Thank you, sir. That being said, I would like to place item twenty dash six one four in the mo- in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second? Thank you so much, was that Councilmember Burdanley or Miller? Dr. Burdanley, okay, it's been properly, uh, moved in second to approve item twenty dash six fourteen. Do we have any, uh, further discussion as relates to this item and Bang Energy from council members? Thank you, I don't see any, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash six fourteen is unanimously approved.
That is all we have under the Economic Development Committee at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, and thank you, Mr. Pumphreys, we appreciate you coming in this evening. We'll move on then to item number eight, which is Finance Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have one item tonight, under Finance, adopting, adopting ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one general fund budget. Ms. Callen had presented that to us in our committee meetings on Thursday, and again, uh, Thursday night during our regular meeting. Uh, if there are other questions that, that we may have of her, we can ask her to come to the podium, if not, we will move along. Anyone have any additional questions concerning that amendment? Okay, seeing none, then we will forego that, and I will make a motion to approve item twenty dash five seventy-two.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I thought I heard a, a hearty second, was that you, Councilman Watts? Okay, it's been, uh, moved by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilman Watts, to approve item twenty dash five seventy-two for our general fund budget, um, amendments to the City of Douglasville's fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Do we have any additional comments as it relates to this item from council members? Thank you, oh, yes, or Mr. Chairman, no, okay. Uh, thank you too much to the Finance Committee, um, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five seventy-two is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all that we have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Callen, I'm from Finance, we appreciate that, our Director of Finance. I will move on to Housing and Community Affairs Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No, I'm just, uh, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on then to Planning and Development Committee, we're gonna get comfortable, uh, we have Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have a few items tonight.
Yes, sir.
We will begin planning and development with item A, consider a request for approval of a development plan for Oakmont Skyview Drive for twenty-five point eighty-eight acres at twenty-eighty-four and twenty-one twenty Skyview Drive, located Land Lot five twenty-one, District eighteen, Section two, Parcel three, and Land Lot four eighty, District eighteen, Section two, Parcel one, for plans dated November sixth, two thousand twenty, application by Oakmont Paclet Acquisitions LLC. Ms. Williams, you have some updated information for us?
Uh, nothing new, I just want to reiterate, Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street, uh, that the applicant would like to have this item tabled to December seventeenth and twenty-first.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any discussion or any questions concerning the item prior to that motion? They did come in on Thursday night and, and request that, I see no reason not to abide by that, so I will make a motion to, uh, to table item twenty dash five eighty-four to the meetings of December seventeenth and December twenty-first, two thousand twenty.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to table item twenty dash five eighty-four to the, uh, city council meetings of December seventeenth and twenty-first, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, it's been properly moved in second to table item twenty dash five eighty-four to December seventeenth and twenty-first meetings. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? All those in favor of tabling this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, um, item twenty dash five eighty-four is tabled to the meetings of December seventeenth and twenty-first, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, item B, hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance to reduce the required fifty-foot front yard setback in Section four point oh eight of the Unified Development Ordinance for one A variance of thirty-one feet for remaining requirement of nineteen feet, and two, a variance of twenty-one feet for remaining requirement of twenty-nine feet on the north side of lot for six point three six acres at fifty-eight eighty-eight Fairbun Road in Doug- in Land Lot fifty, District one, Section five, Parcel seventeen, application by Kat Alvarez for Chick-fil-A, Ms. Williams?
Nothing new to add at this time, we do have the applicant here, if you do have additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, Mr. Moore, did you have anything you'd like to add, uh, to the information? I appreciate you coming in again tonight, is, is Mr., is Kat Alvarez on the phone by chance?
Uh, sir, this is Frank Bedeen with Essentia Architecture, the Senior Project Manager for Chick-fil-A. Um, I'm here to entertain any questions, uh, Mayor Robinson and Honorable Councilmembers of Douglasville, uh, we thank you very much for allowing us to have this on the agenda.
Thank you very much, anyone have any question or comment of the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, these are the canapes that we're in referencing to, for, to help with inclement weather and all of that, to protect the employees and the, uh, patrons that are coming to Chick-fil-A to purchase your delicious food.
Correct.
Yes. Yes, sir, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had, just wanted clarity about the canapes.
Anyone else? Okay, without further discussion, then I make a motion that we approve item twenty dash five seventy-nine.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, I think we had a tie between Dr. Burdanley and Councilmember Davis, did you get who, uh, made the motion, said Ms. Acker? Okay, they punched it in, I don't see it on my screen, but I trust you. So, um, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five seventy-nine. Do we have any additional comments or questions, and any further discussion as relates to this item from council members? I don't see any, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five seventy-nine is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we'll move on to item C.
You're welcome.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for warehousing or indoor storage for properties owned LI Light Industrial District. Still trying to get me to vote on the previous item, um. Being forty-three point ninety-nine acres at fifteen fifty-one North River Road, Land Lot one seventy-two, District one, Section five, Parcel fifteen, application by CHI Acquisitions LP, Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street, at this time, staff has no information, uh, new information to add, but we do have the applicant with us tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, if the applicant is present and has any additional information concerning the item, please come forward and share that, if not, then we'll move along in the public hearing, but you do have the opportunity to give any additional information, so long it is, as it is new information. Okay? Uh, this being a public hearing, we do need to give opportunity, so I would welcome anyone to come and speak, first of all, in favor of the application. If not, if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the application with new information, please. Please come forward. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Doing well, thank you very much, yourself? Uh, my name's Kevin McGuire, reside at thirty-two fifty-two Bakewell Street, Douglasville, Georgia, um, live right off in the tributary, uh, New Manchester subdivision, so more warehouses directly affect, uh, our community. We have since, in probably the past eighteen, twenty-four months, we've doubled inside, more than doubled in size, and we're continuing to grow, there's a lot of development going on, parcels are being built on every day out there. Uh, more truck traffic is just, we have a single lane, well, not really a single lane, but the road hasn't been, Riverside Parkway has not been wide to accommodate, I guess, the increase in truck traffic. And we just keep continuing to have more and more warehouses built on Riverside Parkway. Uh, I don't know why people will come in and buy land and want to, already knowing that it's, it's owned for one thing, and then now they want to rezone it, change in zoning. Um, I've been advised that, uh, I guess, uh, an argument for this is that a precedent has been set. Kihi Foods is not really much of a precedence, because in our opinion, that was kind of a, a, a backroom deal. The application for that was withdrawn, and then a couple of weeks later, it was approved without any public input at all. Uh, and that was all on Mr. Warr's property that he owns there, or used to own. But it's just, it's, it's a detriment to our, our community. It's not uncommon to have truck traffic to make U-turns in front of our neighborhood, blocking traffic, people commuting to and from work. Uh, there really is no place along there for trucks to pull off and wait, uh, for, in case, again, a Kihi Foods, uh, if they're early, there's no place for them to wait, they have to park on the side of the road, which, uh, I know that's a. They have to park on the side of the road, which, uh, I know that's a county road, and we're talking city property. I don't know if the county still does not allow trucks to park on the side of the road or in the, where there is a center lane. They will sometimes park in there. Uh, so, again, I approve this, and I thank you for your time. Or I oppose this.
You oppose this? Okay, thank you. Others? Anyone else that would come to speak with new information concerning this public hearing? Comments, questions from council? Madam Mayor, I'll open the floor for that. Any other discussion to be had? I would, no, no one? I thought that Ms. Miller had, had wanted to make a comment. None? Okay. Um, I would ask the question of the applicant, again, if he would come forward for just a moment. I want to make sure that I have clarity here as to the use or intended use, um, because I understand that the other properties in, on the street, and Ms. Williams, clarify this for me if I'm wrong, the other properties on the street that have yet to be built upon would be required to do the same as far as applying for a variance to use the property for certain things within the LI zoning district, and that special land use permit would then provide that if they were allowed. Is that correct? Okay. Would you please, first of all, give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, thank you. Carl Westmoreland, thirty-three forty-three Peachtree Road, Atlanta.
Thank you, Mr. Westmoreland. I just want to make sure that I understand you are asking for a special land use permit because the property in question, you want to develop and build something that requires a special land use permit even though it is zoned LI.
That's correct. I think under your two thousand eight, uh, ordinance, it was a requirement that warehouses require a use permit within the LI district, and that's what we're asking for. It's, you've heard several of these before, but that's procedurally what we're doing.
Okay, and could you give us an idea? I realize and understand that in your last meeting with us on Thursday, you told us that this would be a spec-built building. Because of the size of the building, it wasn't. It wasn't something that you could go out and solicit a user?
I think so. But, uh, Mr. Bateman, uh, is the, is with Crow Holdings. He responded to that question Thursday. I'll let him respond again.
Sure, please do that.
Good evening. John Bateman, thirty-seven fifteen Northside Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-two-seven. Uh, yes, to answer your question, the reason is because of the size of the site, uh, very similar to the property that was built next door, which is not the Kihi property. Um, the, the property next door was built on a speculative basis, similar size, just around two-hundred-and-forty-thousand square feet. Um, and that, the size of those buildings cater to the smaller users who cannot afford to, or not large enough capitalized, to go the build-to-suit route, um, which is the multi-tenant building design, so it'll accommodate, uh, you know, smaller tenants. Uh, normally, there's five-to-ten-year leases, and that, they just cannot go the build-to-suit route. I think the last time we checked, um, all, most if not all of the, you know, multi-tenant-type properties built in this area, um, if not the, the entire ci- city are built on a speculative basis to lease to multiple tenants, uh, smaller tenants.
And I know, Mr. Bateman, you're repeating yourself, and that's because I had requested it, and I know that's contrad- contradictory to what we asked for in new information, but I'm just trying to understand. You, you made the comment just then that the building in question that you're trying to get the special land use permit on would be compared to, is that the first building on the left when you turn on to North River?
Yes, sir. It's on, it's on Riv- we're on River Road.
On North River Road, yes.
That is exactly right. Yes, sir.
So it would be, it'd be comparable to that building and would look for similar users?
Exactly right.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other question or comment? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, now that you've opened Pandora's Box, I'll just say for, um, for this particular, um, applicant, you did make a distinction that you believe that a user would be, um, a small business that was like a showroom, would have product that would show, and then parking is in the back, and you have the buffer, the natural buffer in the back and all of that with the vegetation.
That is right. The, the building has, has been designed, and the site plan that was submitted shows office and storefront in the, in the front of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we would accommodate the office space, sales space, showroom-type space in the front of the building,
where the employee parking is.
Uh, and then any, um, all the truck docks are in the rear of the facility, which are then buffered, uh, with an undisturbed area, and then Sweetwater Creek behind our undisturbed area.
Okay. And thank you so much for, we apologize for having you repeat yourself.
No problem.
Um, but we do ra- realize our council member was out, but she watched the video. We just want to kind of reiterate so that she could hear Councilmember Miller.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll speak to my little area of knowledge on this. Um, my concern is I see a lot of concrete on this, but a lot of plain concrete that just goes on for miles. Um, and this building does, is, is, as you've got a site, it sits pretty close to the road. Um, was that your intent to just leave that, all that exposed concrete?
So, the site itself, we're actually only developing forty-one percent of the site, uh, and only, the building coverage ratio is only fourteen-point-six percent of the site.
But I'm looking, I'm looking at the rendering that you, you showed. I'm looking at the elevations.
Yes, yes, sir. The building is built with a, it's called tilt-wall concrete. It is the construction method used for all, all, um,
Is.
And so we would put, like I mentioned, storefront and the front office areas, uh, and then architectural elements as well, but it is a concrete building.
How, you said you're, you're seeking smaller tenants to go in this building, so it's gonna be a lot of small tenants that don't need windows, apparently?
No, there, we would accommodate up to three tenants, and that is considered a smaller tenant. Uh, the building next door to us.
Small.
Yep, yeah, and, and, and in the realm of, uh, this type of building, uh, the facility next door, which is a similar size, like I mentioned, there are three tenants in the fifty-thousand to ninety-thousand square foot range, so that's what we are, uh, looking to accommodate.
I'm just, I don't even see any articulation on that facade. It's just a blank wall going.
Th- those are very preliminary, preliminary renderings. Um, but yes, there will certainly be articulation as well as storefront and office similar to the building built, uh, immediately adjacent to it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Just a, a note in passing, Mr. Bateman, to make sure that we understand the location. You say the building next door to it, geographically, it, I presume that the two property lines do meet, but there is a very extreme, uh, not a ravine, but a low area where there's nothing built, that you are proposing, it appears, to have a parking area to the left of the building, but the, the building we're speaking of, the first building on the left on North River, is the neighbor property, correct?
Yes, sir.
It's just that your, your building is pushed to the right, if I'm standing in the street, because of the area that's not able to be developed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I want to make sure of that.
Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Um, the, uh, the trucks that, uh, would come, uh, will they have the ability to get into the property? Some of the complaints I've heard from residents down there is trucks parked along Riverside Parkway, uh, because they're waiting for the facility that they're going to to open up or allow them to come in. Uh, would trucks be able to have access to this property whenever they arrived, or is it a similar-type situation?
The, the facility would be open, and, and they would also be able to queue on River Road. I think all of the complaints that we've heard about trucks, um, parked on the side of the road, I would assume ninety percent of those are for this Kihi facility that seems to be a bad actor in the area, um, because every complaint we have heard from trucks on Riverside has been brought up with the name Kihi. We are on River Road. Any potential truck queuing or, or if anybody coming into our facility, they're using River Road, so they would be coming off of Riverside, so there would be no reason for them to park on the side of Riverside when all of River Road, which is, uh, a hundred percent industrial roadway, leads directly to our building, and then they would obviously be able to pull into our facility and, uh, and queue within our facility, uh, or in the parking that we have.
I just, I, I guess I wonder, that road being, uh, a hundred percent commercial, how many trucks are already parking there that's caused any overflow onto?
Well, I know, and I know in my, in my visit to the site on Thursday, there's only one building other than Gordon Foods, when you turn on to North River. It's on the right, so the only building in question, the one that has been built, is a rear-load building, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't experience any truck parking there. But there, there's one way in and one way out. There's a cul-de-sac.
Right.
So, and it, it's a wide road, so I'm assuming unless you're, unless this would be gated, then they would have twenty-four-hour access to get in and out. They, it, they would not be locked out, as you were mentioning, the Kihi building being a bad, a bad operator potentially in, in your words, or a bad player in this idea. Um, they are, they have a gate that stops anyone from coming in and out. Would this structure and this development have a gate that would lock those trucks out?
No, it's not, not current, currently contemplated, and, and we normally do not use gates unless there's a high-security concern, which there's not in this area.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Yes, uh, Councilwoman Miller?
I just want to clarify the information that I have here, or what's on my head, rather. Um, out of the, just under forty-four acres, how much of that's going to be developed again?
Eighteen.
Okay. And so that leaves a, quite a substantial buffer between you guys and the, the creek, Sweetwater Creek. And if I'm, when I'm looking at the map, I see that it's positioned on the industrial road that's next to, um, what's the building called again that's got, that's very similar to yours?
It, it doesn't have a name, but it's, it's the only building on our side of River Road there at the corner of Riverside.
Right, and they've got, is it two or three businesses in there now?
Three.
And what kind of traffic do they have?
From our experience, we don't own that facility, so I couldn't tell you exactly, but from our experience in the area, it, it is, um, not very high traffic, and it would probably be, be very similar to the traffic study that we had conducted on ours. I would imagine it would be similar traffic.
Right. Because in my mind, I, I, um, kind of compare it to something like, um, what's that? The Wind something or other on, um, Bankhead, the Plumbing Supply?
Wind Supply?
Yes, absolutely, because they, they do have a warehouse there, but they also have like a showroom up front, so it, it's a much smaller scale. Am I understanding that properly?
Yeah, tha- that's right. We've designed the building with the front being, it's called a rear-load, so the, there's only one side of the building that has the truck dock access, which is in the back, which is the side that, that we've provided a lot of the undisturbed buffer.
And, and again, this is, it's not a zoning change, and this ordinance, if it was put into effect in two thousand eight, means that it's been zoned light industrial since sometime previous to two thousand and eight. So that's been a clear understanding. No, um, i- is that correct? Okay.
I think it maybe was changed, uh, let Ms. Williams correct me, but it was changed to light industrial after that, but two thousand eight ordinance is the one that requires that within the light industrial classification, you've got to have a, a land use permit for warehouse. So that's what we're asking. It, it, you're correct, it does not change the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify those things.
Madam Mayor, did you have another point?
You're reading my mind, Mr. Chairman. Um, Councilmember, uh, Miller, it's pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine of our one forty-six pages, and undo, we have a DRI in, in there as well, but that's a traffic study. It gives the peak times and all of that.
Others? My computer has gone blank, so I'll have to revert here to paper. Just one minute. Thank you, I've got it. Okay, are there other questions or comments? Anyone else that would like to speak? Thank you all. I appreciate you coming in. We will close that portion of the public hearing. Any other comment or question that the council, Madam Mayor, may have? Okay? Then concerning item twenty-five-four-seven, I make a motion to approve.
Thank, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chairman Adams made a motion to approve, and thank you. Councilman Davis, uh, second. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or any further, is there further discussion as it relates to this item from council members? I know we've had some discussion already. Thank you. Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving item twenty-five-four-seven, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? So we have two, nay. Did you get that, Ms. Acker? I think it was Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley. That was four to two? So, thank you. Majority rules, so item twenty-five-four-seven is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on to item D. Pardon me for one moment. Item D, hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance to eliminate the required screening requirements in Section six-point-oh-five-nine-B of the Unified Development Ordinance for forty-three point ninety-nine acres at fifteen-fifty-one North River Road, Land Lot one-seventy-two, District one, Section five, Parcel fifteen, application by CHI Acquisitions LP. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. At this time, we have no new information to add.
Thank you. The applicant is here, uh, and I see that the applicant is one in the same. If you would like to come forward with any new information, we would welcome that. Um, anyone that would have any question or comment? I see no new information. Is there any, uh, question or comment that Mayor or Ma- or Madam Mayor or council may have of the applicant? Or anyone else that would speak in opposition to this application with new information, or that would speak in favor of this application? I reverse those, I realize. Doesn't matter. Any other information here? I understand that in looking at this, uh, the screening requirements that are, that they're requesting a, a variance from,
Mm-hmm.
would be in place to screen Public Street from, is my understanding, Mr. Anderson had mentioned to me today, uh, from trucks, from loading docks. Is that, is that correct, staff? Um, I see the way that the property is, is situated, and the way the building is situated, that the screening would benefit the private area and the Sweetwater Creek, basically would be what the requirements of screening would do. Uh, and I do not see that there are other parcels of residential zone property that this would be abutting. Am I correct there in that assumption, uh, staff?
Correct, Mr. Adams.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I, I don't, I want to make sure that I have the right information here, uh, because I do not, I do not see that the application of the screening requirements would be applicable here because of that. So if there are no other, there's no other information, no other question or comment, I'll close the public hearing. I'm gonna make a motion to approve that variance, twenty-six-oh-six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly, uh, moved and second to approve item twenty-six-zero-six. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Any further discussion as it relates to this item? For the variance? Okay, all those in favor of approving twenty-six-zero-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you, Ms. Acker. Did you get the two? Okay. A majority, uh, rules, so we have approval for item twenty-six-zero-six.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will move on then to item E.
Mm-hmm.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from R-two, single-family residential detached to O-I Office Institutional District for sixteen-point-fifteen acres at Timber Ridge Road, Land Lot fifty-four, District one, Section five, Parcel two, application by Douglasville A.L. Investors LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. At this time, we don't have any new information to offer. Uh, we do have a rep with us tonight, Mr. Fowler, their attorney, the attorney, and we have someone on the phone if you have questions.
Okay. Um, Mr. Fowler, if you'd come forward with any new information, if you have any, we would welcome that.
Everyone, Joe Fowler, post office box forty-nine Douglasville. The only additional information is a needs study that was provided by Aubrey, who is on the line in Charleston, if you'd like to hear from her. And it essentially did the following. It assessed the demand that they now see in the market. And interestingly, some of the facilities in the immediate area, I'm thinking about the Oaks specifically, even through COVID, are at fifty percent full at this point. They believe and are willing to invest in the community based on the demand that they see, given circumstances in the market, and they request your approval. I forwarded the document to you about one-thirty, and I think Patrice put that in your packet if you were interested in looking at that. If you have specific questions, she's available online, and you can hear from her.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Appreciate that. Coach, did you have a comment or question?
Mr. Fowler, did you, I, I want to make sure I heard this right.
Mr. Fowler, did you, I want to make sure I heard this right. Did you say that the facilities that are available here in the county or the city are only fifty percent occupancy right now? Or is that what I heard?
I've referred only to the Oaks.
Oh, okay.
Which, you know where it is on Timber Ridge, right there.
Right.
It's fifty-one point four seven percent at this point with respect to assisted living. Memory Care is forty point six three. The Benton House is eighty-six percent for assisted living, eighty-seven and a half percent for memory care. Grace Assisted is ninety-five percent for assisted living, a hundred percent for memory care. So the demand is there, and that's the basis for their having made this application.
Hey, thank you.
I assume, Mr. Fowler, you mentioned the Oaks because that's the newest facility there.
Yes, and in the immediate area.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Questions? Other questions or comments? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank Mr. Fowler and the applicant for sending that information in. That was my question. I just didn't want to be overrun or have, not be able to fill the capacity of having too many senior facilities. Not, I'm getting to that age myself, but I just didn't want to have a plethora of, you know, facilities that we didn't need. And so I understand that fifty percent is, you're saying that's really, you're doing well in this COVID environment, that people are still starting to come to that new facility, which I visited facilities, very nice. So, but thank you so much for following up. That gives us some more data to consider. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Others?
Mr. Chairman, one last question. I guess this is for you. I don't see Ms. Williams, but maybe Ms. Hampton. Are we doing a, oh, there she is, I'm sorry. Are we doing, are we in the process of doing a needs study or right now? Okay, I thought we were.
Yeah, we're doing a housing study with ARC, and we're going to do another one following that one as well.
And that will cover the senior living, okay.
That will be included.
That'll be good. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone here that would speak with new information, either for or against the application? Please come forward. I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Then is there any other comment? Counsel? Madam Mayor. Seeing none then, we will make a motion that we approve this zoning at item twenty-five-four-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty-five-four-eight. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving twenty-five-four-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-five-four-eight is approved unanimously.
Moving on then to item F.
Mm-hmm.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for a personal care home for properties owned R2 Single Family Residential Detached, being seven point six seven acres at fifteen twenty Doris Road, Land Lot Two Twenty-eight, District Two, Section Five, Parcel Four. Application by Mr. Lon Bell. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. We have no new information to add at this time. We do have the applicant with us and someone on the phone as well to speak.
Anyone would like to provide Mr. Bell or the applicant on the phone with any new information? If so, please come forward or speak up. New information. Okay, do we have any questions, or do we have anyone else here that would speak on behalf of the applicant? Or in opposition to the applicant? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Ma'am.
My name is Yvonne Smith. I'm the neighbor of Mr. Bell. I have some questions about the proposed development and the application for the special use permit. I've lived in this, the home at fifteen eighty Doris Road for seven years, and I get, had the chance to speak with Mr. Bell about his plans to develop the lot that's adjacent to my property. And I just wanted to know what are some of the, what's the proposal, the actual proposed location of the structure? And what are the setback requirements or any buffers that are required by code? Because I want to ensure that there is still a bit of privacy and the tree canopy is maintained. There is a great deal of wildlife back here. As you all probably could imagine, there's everything that you wouldn't normally see in North Georgia that goes through these woods. So I just have questions about that. Where would the structure be located? What are the setbacks or buffer requirements? And as it relates to the actual special use permit, how does Mr. Bell ensure that his residents are truly maintaining a residential living environment versus that of like a rooming house or short-term, short-term stay?
Ms. Williams, can you help us with part of this, please? It's going to be difficult to respond, I'm afraid, because we're here looking at a survey of the property, and you may, you're not privy to that, I would assume, so.
I saw it. I have the agenda up, but I didn't even know that property was subdivided until recently.
Okay, where do you reside in relation to the property, ma'am?
I'm on the flag lot at fifteen eighty.
Okay, and, okay, are you, what is your name again? Let me see if I can pick you out on this map.
Her name is Yvonne Smith. Yvonne Smith.
Yvonne Smith, okay, got you. Mr. Anderson, could you help us with that?
Orion Anderson, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. The property is owned R2, and the side setback requirements are fifteen feet, and the front yard setback is fifty feet. So those are the buffers.
Does the applicant meet those requirements?
Uh, yes, he has seven point six acres, so he can place the house in a position where he could either be, he could be further away than that.
Yes, sir.
But that is the minimum, correct, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, minimum requirements.
Ms. Smith, does that help you?
It's somewhat. I mean, I guess my question would be for Mr. Bell, and it's probably his prerogative if he's allowed to do so, but would he be planning to put additional properties back there as well? Or can he subdivide the property further than what he's already done?
Well, no, he can't put another personal care home there because there's a thousand-foot requirement of, that he can't, I mean distant requirement of a thousand feet between two personal care homes.
But he could put another house that isn't a personal care home, correct?
Well, he said he wouldn't, but actually because he's consolidating the property now, so he wouldn't be able to do it.
Okay.
Come back before council and to enable to do that.
Yes, he would have to come back and apply for a revised plat to do that.
Yes, sir. So there will be checks and balances, Ms. Smith, if he decided to, if Mr. Bell decided to come back, that he would have to come before the mayor and council and the planning commission.
Okay, and then like my, again, my question to him, just how would he ensure that the residents are maintaining the type of living, the CLA that he discussed?
We'll have Mr. Bell to respond to that.
Give her your credentials.
Good evening, this is Lon Bell, sixty-four Seventy Cedar Mountain Road, Douglasville, Georgia. Yeah, as we've done this for over twenty years, you know, we're, I guess the best term you can use, long-term care. That's their home. They make a family there. They live there. We take care of them. And, you know, this is not a resident that would be high turnover. There is turnover, let's be honest. There's from time to time, if someone, if a family member moves out of state and they want to take their loved one that lives in the area with them, that can happen. Those kind of things happen, but typically, I would say ninety percent of the individuals we serve live at their home, and just like you and I live at our homes. And it's, I hope I answered the question.
Yes, sir. Just as a point of clarification, I think even for Ms. Smith, she's made mention of the upkeep of the home. Now, you are the owner, so I'm assuming it would be your responsibility to maintain, keep maintenance repair and so forth and keep it tightly.
I appreciate you bringing that up. This is going to be our first home that we're building ground up. It's going to be brand new. And like I said, it's going to be, if you walked in it, it would look like a normal home to y'all. But I would be able to walk in it and say, this could really serve our clients well because of the way it's laid out and drawn, so.
And meets the state requirements as well.
Yeah, it meets all state requirements, yes.
For personal care homes.
Yes, ma'am. And actually, you know, we keep saying personal care homes, but it's community living arrangement, which falls under that category.
Okay. Any other question or comment? Ms. Smith, does that help you?
That doesn't. Again, I just want to reiterate, I'm in support of him erecting the structure there, and I feel like that's, he's doing a good service to the community. I just wanted to make sure that I had those questions answered about where it would be located and all the different zoning requirements. And also just to ensure that he doesn't strike me as a type that would, that would, you know, try to have a bunch of people in there and they wouldn't be taken care of. But I work in this industry as well in a different municipality, and I know how it can go sometimes, so. I'd say it wouldn't hurt for me just to ask these questions during the meeting.
Sure.
Yes, so I can clarify that for you. Four individuals are the most that the state will allow us to serve. It's not a sixteen or twenty bed, it's four beds. That's all it is, that's all it will ever be, is up to four bedrooms.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, then we will close that portion of the public hearing. And on item twenty-five-ninety-one, I would make a motion that we approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you so much, Councilmember Dr. LaShawna Burdanyly. It's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty-five-ninety-one. Do we have any further discussion as it relates to this item from council members? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. And we have one abstention, Mayor Pro Tem, Miller. So item twenty-five-ninety-one is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. and Ms. Bell, for what you do. Appreciate that. I'm going to give, okay, Councilman Miller is back, so we will move ahead. We'll move on to item G. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for a funeral home for properties owned R2 Single Family Residential Detached, being two point four nine acres at eighty-three twelve Highway Ninety-two, sixty-six sixty-one Ridge Avenue, sixty-six forty-five Ridge Avenue, in Land Lot Seventeen, District One, Section Five D, Parcels Eighteen, Twenty, and Eighty-two. Application by Watkins Mortuary Incorporated. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. There's no new information to add at this time. The applicant is not with us tonight.
Okay. As being a public hearing, we need to make sure that we give anyone the opportunity again to speak, so I will open the floor for those that may want to speak with new information, either for or against this application. Seeing no one, we will close that portion of the hearing then, and we have heard from the applicant on Thursday night. It looked to be a great plan, and if there are no other questions or comments, then I will move forward with a motion to approve item twenty-five-ninety-two.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Adams, with the stipulations, I think on Thursday was asked that they don't have to come back every two years?
Yes, they being the property owner. I'm sorry, I can revise my motion. Thank you. I'll withdraw that motion and revise my motion for approval, including that they are not required then to have this looked at every two years to be reviewed. This would be permanent with them as owners.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman Burdanyly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Burdanyly. I'm glad you remembered that. So I will state the motion again to approve item twenty-five-ninety-two with a revision that was read by the chair about not requiring for the applicant to come back every two years, that it would be with the property owner as long as he owned the property, not to come back and have it rezoned. So it's been properly moved and second to approve this item with the information, additional information read by the chair. Any other comments or questions as it relates to this item?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Burdanyly, did you second?
Yes.
Yes. So it's been properly moved and second. The chair made the motion to approve. Councilmember Burdanyly made the second, and we inserted the information about not coming back to have a requirement to have it approved every two years. So all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-five-ninety-two is approved with the special stipulation of, read by the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on then to item H.
Mm-hmm.
Consider a request for final plat approval for the purpose of subdividing into five tracts for three hundred and fifty-nine point two five nine acres at North River Road in Land Lot One Sixty-six, District One, Section Five, Parcels One, Two, and Four, and in Land Lot One Seventy-three, District One, Section Five, Parcels Two and Eleven, Land Lot One Seventy-four, District One, Section Five, Parcel One, and Land Lot Nine Ninety-eight, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel One. Application by Pablo Garcia Urban Engineers Incorporated. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. We have no further information to add at this time. We do have the applicant with us if you have any questions for him.
Okay, Ms. Williams, I did want to make sure that, I think that I had asked this on Thursday night. We do have everything, all the requirements, all of the work that is required to be done as far as final plat approval is complete. Correct. And I see that we have Mr. Cardoza here. Is there any question or comment that we would have, mayor or council, of Ms. Williams or of the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I make a motion then that we approve item twenty-six oh two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty-six zero two. Do we have any further discussion as it relates to this item from council members? Thank you. Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-five, six zero two is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moving on to item I. Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of right-of-way dedication for three point one five nine acres at North River Road in Land Lot One Seventy-three, District One, Section Five, Parcel Two. Application by Brian Cardoza for Rooker Riverside LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. We have no new information to add. The applicant is with us if you have any questions for him.
I'll open the floor for questions or comments concerning this. We do have a right-of-way plat on file. I did take a ride through that development last week. Looked like it was extremely close, putting in streetlights, I believe. Everything looks good.
I went by it today. I went by it today, Councilman Adams, and it does, it looks good.
No questions, no comments? We'll make a motion to approve item twenty-six zero zero.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty-six hundred. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Thank you. Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-six hundred is unanimously approved.
Last item, item J. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance to eliminate the requirements in section two point oh six A of the Unified Development Ordinance and allow for the use of corrugated metal siding for point seven eight seven acres at eighty-five seventy-eight Club Drive, Land Lot Sixteen, District One, Section Five D, Parcel Three. Application by the City of Douglasville. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. At this time, we have no information to add. Mr. Thompson is here if you have any questions for him.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, would you approach, please? I would like to ask a question, just really as a means of clarification. I've had some constituents that have mentioned the fence around the property, on the front of the property. I just want to make sure that the corrugated metal that we are speaking of using there in the update of that property is for what exactly?
For the warehouse towards the rear of the site.
The warehouse that is on the rear of the site only. In other words, what already has metal siding on it to be repurposed the same way?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because the fence and so forth, we want to make sure that was nothing to be used for that material there. Okay, questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I make a motion that we approve item twenty-five-eighty-three.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve item twenty-five-eighty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty-five-eighty-three. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-five-eighty-three is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jenkins, we have feedback on the microphone. I don't know what's going on. That right there. So I want anyone to come on and not be able to hear what we're talking about. We'll move on to the next committee, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one item this evening, and that is to appoint an individual as a post-foremember of Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And I think you guys all have your ballots. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Chelsea Jackson, six-six, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Before you should have ballots, and once you have voted, I will come by. Before you should have ballots, and once you have voted, I will come by and pick them up and read the results aloud. The results are as follows. Have Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Burdanley voting for Ms. Sharon Hill Robinson. We have Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller voting for Ms. Sharon Robinson. We have Mayor Robinson voting for Ms. Sarah Petracelli. We have Councilman Watts voting for Ms. Sarah Petracelli. We have Councilman Adams voting for Ms. Sarah Petracelli. And Councilman Davis voting for Ms. Sharon Robinson. Making a total of three votes for Ms. Sarah Petracelli and three votes for Sharon Robinson.
Little Phil, can you remind us what we do in the event of a tie?
There's seven people here, where's another ballot?
And we also have, uh, my apologies, and we have one vote, um, from Councilwoman Nicole Miller for Ms. Sharon Robinson, so majority for Ms. Sharon Hill Robinson, four, and three for Ms. Sarah Petracelli. My apologies.
Okay. So, Ms. Robinson is the person that will be appointed to, uh, the Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Is that your motion, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Ms. Sharon Hill for the term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, we have a motion to approve item twenty dash five ninety-eight with Ms. Robinson, uh, Sharon Hill Robinson, to be appointed to the Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board expiring, uh, term for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five ninety-eight is approved. Oh, I apologize, who was the second, I'm going too fast. Do we have a second? Yes, sir, we already voted. Uh, so it's been properly moved in second to approve this item with Ms. Robinson as the appointee to the Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board. So, all those in favor of approving this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Ms. Robinson is the appointee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you so much, uh, Madam Chair, we'll move on to Public Relations Committee. The Vice Chair is Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No, I'm just saying, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. We'll move on then to the next committee, which you are the Chair of as well, which is Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Adams.
At this time, we have no business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We'll move on then to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, sir. Move on to Technology Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to the next committee. Uh, we do have some business, and that is Transportation Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have three items. First item, adopt the final draft of comprehensive transportation plan and transmit the plan to the Atlanta Regional Commission. After reading, um, the details, I didn't see any other, um, errors as it relates to the street names, did anyone else pick up anything different? Okay, if not, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item twenty dash five two eight.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, do we have any additional, uh, comments or questions, or does anyone see any further, um, things that we need to correct? I know we had Hawkeye, Councilmember Adams. You second, okay, yes, sir. So, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five twenty-eight. Any other comments or questions as it relates to this item? Thank you, not seeing any, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five twenty-eight is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, second item, adopt the final draft of the Douglas, of the Downtown Bicycle and Pedestrian Connectivity Plan and transmit the plan to the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, we have a motion to approve item twenty dash five twenty-nine. Uh, do we have a second, please? Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, it's been properly moved in second, bless you, properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five twenty-nine. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Thank you, not seeing any, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five twenty-nine is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the last item is authorize the mayor to sign Task Order twenty-two with AECOM Technical Services Inc. commending the party's professional services agreement of August twenty-six, two thousand and fifteen to add a scope of work for self-evaluation and a transition plan to conform certain facilities to the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act and guidelines. I make a motion that we approve item twenty dash five nine nine.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, um, there's a motion to approve twenty dash, item twenty dash five ninety-nine. Do we have any, um, do we have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five ninety-nine. Uh, do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? Thank you, I'm not seeing any, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, um, any opposed? The ayes have it, twenty dash five ninety-nine is unanimously approved. Is that all you have, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am, no other items, thank you.
You're welcome, we'll move on then to, um, other business. Council members? Okay, Councilman Watts, do you have anything? Okay, I have just a few, I would, um, the update from the Christmas lights that we talked about. We've hired a company to install new lights, and we purchased those lights. And, um, Mr. Sarowitz sent a letter to the council members to let us know uh, what was going on and to update the timeframe of which those lights will be installed, in addition to the ones that are already up. Um, and he says in his letter, he sent to us, if we want to read through it, it was sent on December the fourth, that, um, O'Neal Plaza Lights are going up this week, December seventh, and they'll continue either at the end of the week or the very beginning of the week of November, I mean, December the fourteenth. Um, that lights over Atlanta, they are installing the lights at Jesse Davis Park, and they had to do some other rewiring, but those should be up, um, starting, uh, December eighth is the drilling, and two days after that completion, and City Manager, if I'm not stating it correctly, that the lights will go up then. Do you have any additional comments about that?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Councilmember Watts, we open the floor for comments or questions about that, yes, sir?
Uh, next year, if we renew, uh, with this company next year, when when would everything go up?
We'll be the owners of those lights, so I think the installation will be a quicker timeframe. Um, from my understanding, what the letter says is that once we approved it with the council, which was November twenty-seventh, after payment was made, it takes approximately two weeks for all of that to process and for them to order. They will not order those materials or those lights until after they receive their their compensation, their check, so.
But they 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 would be installing what we have, uh, next year.
That's correct, I mean, the the best thing for us to do to gear it for next year would be sometime in September to come before you all, if you want to do this every year, to then authorize it that way. Um, they would have the the appropriate time. Um, as you noticed, uh, some of the clients that were mentioned by Mr. Sarowitz were, um, the Georgia Aquarium and places like that, that I'm pretty certain have very large orders, so we're kind of in the mix with those individuals.
Any other comments from council members, Councilmember Adams?
Just in passing, I think part of our our holdup also is the fact that not knowing we were going to do this, especially in Jesse Davis, we did not have all the necessary wiring in place. And I understand that the contractor has to install that wiring, and he'll be doing that while we're waiting on those to arrive, correct?
That's correct, so in that same vein, if there are other locations that we're looking to add to for next year, we would need to know that around that September timeframe as well to not have a delay.
I'm assuming our contractor has been contacted to be on the ball, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome, any other comments from council members? So, we apologize to, um, the community, we're excited about the lights as well. We know in this COVID climate that we look forward to having our Christmas lights up, and there are some up now, but the rest of our lights will be completed, we pray, by December the fourteenth or fifteenth, but they're starting this week. So, I just wanted to give an update about that, and then a couple of other things as far as it relates to Christmas. We do have the virtual tree lighting that was done on December fifth, that's on our Facebook page. We have a contest for, um, Main Street Holiday Facade Contest, so businesses downtown, and Deck the Homes Holiday Decorating Contest we have as well for, um, citizens to decorate their homes in holiday cheer and send that in to the Facebook page. I understand, uh, Councilman Adams' wife, I I saw her, she's getting a lot of, uh, feedback, but we're not in the contest. We can't be part of the, we can be like people's choice, but we can't win anything, but other citizens can win. And I haven't plugged in all mine lights, God bless you. And the last thing is letters from Santa, there is a mailbox outside that, um, children can bring their letters and drop those off to go to the North Pole in the mailbox, uh, that's right outside of the conference center. So, those are some Christmas updates. Um, for council members, we do have December thirty-first, we need to do our campaign contribution disclosure reports, and, uh, January thirty-first, we have our ethics reports due to the state. So, hopefully everyone, uh, will remember to do that. All the announcements that I had. Any, anything else from council members? All right, then, we'll move on down the line with our updates from city staff, which is item number twenty. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, sir. Chief Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Susan Littlefield.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, our Chief of Police, Chief Sparks, Gary Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir, and our City Manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Um, yes, ma'am, just a reminder, uh, that Ms. Danley, um, has requested to cover her item in the six o'clock meeting, so I will call up Mr. Marcus Thompson, uh, to go over that while she reviews the item, and just also to let you know, you all know that I believe some of the feedback is due to, we have some members of the community online, in particular, to speak on the issue of Charleston Crossing. It is a committee item, so I'll yield to, um, the committee chair as to, um, her interest in allowing them to speak, um, as well as any interest, um, from you all. Chelsea, do you know how many people are online? Three individuals are online. You all have a letter attached in your committee item, so if you don't mind going back to that to see the the requests, as Mr. Thompson goes over the items.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
All right, if you if you all can recall, representatives from the Charleston Crossing, um, Home Owners Association came before you all to request speed humps within the community. Uh, the request was submitted before the most current speed hump ordinance was adopted. So, the item before you is a letter of request for the city to grandfather the community into the new ordinance and take on the costs associated with the installation of speed humps for the community. Please note that we're not sure if speed humps are necessary for the community, so the first option could be to proceed with the traffic study.
Thank you. So, just, um, you know, we put a lot of time into the research and the data, and, um, I hear you, Mr. Marcus, say that this particular HOA Charleston Place requested it before our ordinance. Of course, it's not the first time that we have had a numerous amount of requests for speed humps. I do want to, um, yield my comments for a moment, this is, um, Councilmember Watts Ward, and I'd like to, um, see if you have any comments first.
Well, um, my comments would be that, uh, that the speed humps, uh, that would be installed are expensive, very expensive, uh, Mr. Marcus, uh, could you, uh, remind us approximately?
A rough estimate, I'd say around fifteen thousand per speed hump system.
And the request is for two or three?
Uh, four.
Four, and and also the the, uh, the traffic study.
The cost of the traffic study, I have that, um, for a fifteen-day study, it would be like around forty-five hundred dollars.
And, um, I I do have concerns about any subdivision where traffic, uh, speeding i- is an issue. I can cite my own subdivision, I live at the bottom of a hill, and, uh, it's it's an issue for me, has been for thirty-one years uh, that I've lived there, so, uh, I I can understand, uh, that, but I think one of the reasons why we, uh, did the study and 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 looked into a lot of data was, uh, looking at costs and and eventually, you know, the other subdivisions are going to come and and want something similar, and, uh, so, anyway, it's it's a difficult thing, but it's very costly, and the the city right now, you know, we're, we've been cutting, uh, aside from COVID, uh, so, anyway, I just, I'm kind of torn on on, uh, how they're feeling about the traffic, especially with them being a through, uh, subdivision where cars are cutting through. And I would love to hear any ideas, uh, alternatives to speed humps. But, uh, so, anyway, we've talked about this before, but maybe to refresh everybody's memory, I don't know what other alternatives there are, but.
Thank you, Councilman Watts, do you have any other comments around me or council, yes, Councilman?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Danley.
You're welcome.
Thompson, would you reiterate again, now, you you said that the speed hump system would be fifteen thousand dollars, is that per speed hump? Is that considered a system, or would that be four times fifteen thousand?
It'd be four times fifteen thousand, and that's for a prefabricated, uh, speed hump system.
And then forty-five hundred dollars for a traffic study?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so roughly sixty-five?
And that's a fifteen-day study.
Fifteen, so sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand dollars for speed humps? For that development?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, one last question, uh, the, um, the, um, speed limit signs that you see so- sometimes up that shows when people are exceeding the posted speed limit, uh, that are put up. And I'm not even sure why those are ever put up, uh, I've never heard an explanation for that, but you you see them, uh, occasionally up and showing excessive speeds. My first question is, do we have access to anything like that? And second of all, do they record the number of people exceeding, or is that part of it, or is that part of a traffic study?
I I think the traffic study would determine the number of, um, cars that drove by, but, um, Mr. Thompson, I do believe that the flashing sign outside the two pedestrian signs, I don't know if Mr. Roberts is still here, but that system without the speed, uh, calculation, or at least the speed notification, costs us about twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, keep in mind that we did have to install the the power to make those run, um, so that's in a in a development, so I would assume that we would have to have access to right-of-way and certain things to help to install that system. Um, I know you had asked me and Councilman Watts about, uh, the trailer that we usually have with the police department about calculating, the chief could respond, but of course, that would be temporary, um, as to how they utilize that that.
And? Yes, yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and that's what I was going to say, Councilmember Watts, I'm not certain if you remember, it was probably four years ago, when you and I and the chief went to Chapel Hill subdivision, um, Homeowners, homeowners association meeting, and the chief said if the homeowners association wanted to have that machine, that they could call the police department, and and he would go, there's a process, and they would set that machine up at a certain area in the subdivision, and that could calculate the speed, and then they they would have that data, is that correct? Chief Sparks says by request.
We could do that for a period of time, but.
We could do that for a period of time, but, you know, uh, I mean, we could put the Ted out there, some traffic data collector.
And I think.
So it's a request. It, it kind of gives you, them a visual of slowing down, but then it does calculate the numbers. And I'm not certain, I think the chief said at one point, like, you'll let them slow down for a week and then after that, they'll start writing citations or giving warnings to, um, you know, people coming through the neighborhood.
And I, and I think, uh, with, uh, a system like that, it's, it's a deterrent at the time, but it's also from my perspective, an educational device. Cause people sometimes, they don't even realize that, you know, cause they're going downhill. And so, you know, it may have short-term effects and it's not a long-term solution like speed humps. But, uh, you know, as I said at the beginning, speed humps are very expensive and the, the city, uh, is, you know, be difficult to justify doing that in subdivisions all over the city, which eventually, you know, once you do it for one, they're going to come to you. And I know they're asking for being grandfathered in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, um, anyway, that, that was all I had.
Councilmember, uh, Burdanley, I know you're going to make your recommendation. Um, but did we have, um, were there any, uh, considerations for subdivisions that were, would pay for their own? I know we'd had one citizen in the community that said they would pay for their speed humps on their streets, which was a cut-through. So that we have a caveat, um, in your recommendation maybe for if the HOA wanted to pay for the speed humps. And, and I'm not certain if they would have a private company install, if we would approve after they were installed to make certain that they met, um, you know, uh, the safety recommend, requirements or whatever, I'm not sure, but.
Right. Um, well, let me just back up too. I wanted to say that there were speed humps that have already been approved and, um, money allocated for Hollis Street and Warren Drive. Warren Drive received those speed humps. Hollis Street still to this day has not. To answer your question, Madam Mayor, it's very sticky, in my opinion, for, um, the mayor and council to get involved with HOAs when it comes to fees and paying, because we haven't in the past, it's private. We do have three, um, individuals on the phone.
And but those speed humps on Hollis, I apologize for interrupting you, I just wanted to interject, those are city streets, public streets, they're not in private streets within a subdivision. They're streets that are accessible to everyone, not just the, uh, residents who live in those subdivisions.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, I apologize, being rude.
No, that's okay. Um, I'd like to hear from, is there HOA chair? Or online to speak for the HOA?
Ms. Jackson, do you have the names of the individuals who are online?
Elroy, Rosal.
Can you hear us?
Want to clarify something while we're waiting, Madam Chair?
Okay.
Okay.
The, the streets in Charlton Crossing we're talking about are public streets, are they not? I mean, they're not.
They are public.
They're not, you mentioned private streets, I mean, cause it.
I mean, public, but within the subdivisions, what I'm saying, versus streets that are just open accessible streets.
Okay, you're talking about access, not.
Primary use, the primary use is by the residents in the neighborhood, is what you were referring to, correct, Ma- Mayor?
And I didn't articulate that correctly, but you all understand my meaning.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there someone on the line from Charlton Crossing? Uh, the council is open to hear any comments that you may have?
Uh, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, could you state your name and address for the council so they can hear?
Uh, my name is Tim Marchbanks. I live at 9140 Charlton Place, uh, in Douglasville. I've lived here for 28 years. Um, and so I've got a pretty good history of how this subdivision has, has grown up and how the problem has gotten worse. Um, when we first moved here, 28 years ago, Charlton Place did not go through to Grace Lake. It was not in the zoning, it was not in the planning, it wasn't on any drawing anywhere. That's one reason we purchased in this subdivision, is it was not a through street. Uh, several years later, it was, uh, connected to the backside of Grace Lake, uh, which created a big, a problem, but it wasn't as bad. Uh, but then as it keeps developing, it's become more and more of a thoroughfare. Uh, quite honestly, I have a very simple suggestion that fixes, uh, uh, Councilman Watts', uh, concern with the money, and that is close off the subdivisions as it was 28 years ago. We don't need this to be a through street. It can be a dead end from our end, just like Saddlebrook is to our left and Kensington is to our right. That eliminates cost issues, it eliminates traffic studies, and it eliminates, um, the cut-through, the high-speed cut-through, uh, that is the, the big problem. I, I don't believe it's people within the neighborhood speeding, uh, to the back of the neighborhood. It, it, you know, I, I believe it's, uh, uh, people using this as a cut-through. It doesn't need to be that anymore. I, I don't see a reason why it can't be separated, just as it was drawn when the subdivision was built 28 years ago. Um, and, uh, for some of the other, uh, suggestions that have come up, um, we did do the, uh, uh, speed sign, uh, you know, the flashing sign multiple times years passed. It really didn't do any good. Um, we've been told, and I'm going back 20 years, that they couldn't write tickets on Charlton Place because of the, uh, the slope of the street and the curve. Uh, if that has changed, uh, we would love to have, uh, one of the Douglasville officers sit at the bottom of the hill and write a couple of hundred tickets a day. Uh, it might solve your budget problem, it would definitely solve our speeding problem. Uh, but, uh, I do believe the, the main thing that should be done is just cut the, cut the subdivisions back apart. Uh, it's, you know, Grace Lake exits Chapel Hill, just like it was designed to, and Charlton Crossing, uh, exits Presley Mill, just like it was designed to, uh, before any of this ever happened. Uh, the reason I'm so passionate about this is that, uh, we've raised eight children on, um, Charlton Crossing, in Charlton Crossing, uh, over 28 years. Uh, our youngest is six, uh, she's special needs and she doesn't have the, uh, she doesn't have the cognitive ability to quite understand cars that are flying down the street. Um, and so we have a huge concern with that, uh, as we are now. Um, so if there's any questions for me, I would welcome them. Like I say, I've been here 28 years and, uh, I've, I've seen it grow to a almost unbearable through street at this point, when it started as a small little dead-end subdivision.
Thank you so much for your comments. They're very well taken.
And another thing that, um, to battle the track on Watts, miss.
Excuse me, can you please?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, can you please state your name and your address for the record?
Um, my name is Jacqueline Grant. I live at 9150 Charlton Place in Douglasville. Um, I was there at the last meeting, um, you know, when the, when I spoke on behalf of the community. Now, another thing that you guys, that could solve the issues, since you guys are saying that the speed hump is, is very expensive, another thing that can generate money for the city is installing speed hu- I mean, sorry, is installing, um, speed, um, cameras that will generate funding for the city. So if you can get a couple of those within our cup subdivision or throughout the Douglasville city areas, that would also solve the financial issue that the city has as well. Since the speed humps is, you know, it's quite expensive to do, and the study is quite expensive to do. Um, Mr. Marchbank has lived there longer than I have and, um, you know, and I think what he said is quite true. Um, but, you know, another thing that, as I stated, that can solve that financial issue with the city is to install speed cameras. That would generate funding for the city as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Marchbanks.
Within our subdivision as well as outside the subdivision itself.
Thank you, Mrs. Marchbanks. Do we have the last person?
No, Mrs. Grant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Grant and Mr. Marchbank, Banks, I'm sorry. Thank you for your comments. Actually, your, um, Mr. Marchbank, your comment was very well taken, um, both of them actually. We do have cameras, um, not in your subdivision, but we do have cameras outside of, um, of streets and in other areas as well. But what I'd like to do is, um, end this discussion right now so that our mayor and council will have more time to discuss the, um, comments that you've made, and then we'll go from there. It is not in my recommendation to grandfather this in. Okay?
Ms. Danley?
Yes, ma'am.
What we will do is to take back the idea of closing off the street, uh, to the subdivisions and bring something back. So I'll get with Mr. Thompson and Mr. Roberts, um, to take a look at that. And then we'll get what information that the police department can gather on, um, actual speeds and what's happening in the neighborhood. And we'll come back to you all, probably not the next round of meetings, but at the first meeting of the, of the year.
All right, thank you. Did, were you all able to hear our city manager, Ms. Grant and Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for, um, staying online this time. We do appreciate our citizens' comments. And you all have a wonderful holiday.
Okay, you too, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Madam, Madam Chair, I know we have a couple of comments. Mayor Protimon and myself, I want to ask about city manager, would we include the fire department as well, uh, in that conversation? I'm not certain why the road was, um, opened. I'm not sure if it's accessibility or not. If you need more ways to get in and out of the subdivision, but with, uh, number of homes, my older sub, that, my former subdivision, we had to have another, um, entry and exit way because we, they built more homes on the backside, so.
Um, yes, ma'am, we can have that meeting. And then also, um, Councilman Watts, um, we'll reach out as well to the HO at Grace Lake. Um, because one neighborhood might want that, but the other may not necessarily feel the same. So you may be put in a position of trying to satisfy both neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
I, I agree, uh, Chairman, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Burdanley, that, that Mr. Marchbank's, uh, suggestion would, would probably help the situation if it could in fact be done. Uh, but I would, I would also submit, since we're talking about this, because I live in a subdivision that doesn't have a cut-through and speeding is a problem. In my subdivision, that's all residents. So the, you know, the problem won't totally go away, um, with, uh, closure, uh, of that, of that access road. But I don't, I don't see a problem with that at all. I would love to see that, to be honest with you. And I don't know why Grace Lakes would, uh, they would have the, have the same problem that Charlton Crossing is having as far as people ripping through there that are using it as a cut-through, but I don't know.
I appreciate both the comments. I mean, and I certainly do understand the sentiment from which, where they, they, they come, the both of the suggestions. But, um, I think there may be an issue with the idea of closing off the, the two subdivisions. I mean, it sort of flies in the face of the entire concept that we've been trying to promote about connectivity and having ways of getting from one place to another in this, in the city and efficient and, and, and pedestrian-friendly ways as well. Cause, you know, I know you said you have sidewalks over there in Charlton Crossing. Um, and maybe it just gets closed just at vehicular traffic, but leave it open to maybe bicycles and pedestrians, that would be certainly a concern. But, you know, my, my point is though that, you know, I, I would be a little concerned about the idea of closing, closing existing streets to, you know, to connect, to the connectivity that we're trying to promote from, you know, it, it's okay in one section of the city, but it's not okay in another section of the city, would concern me, um, about that. I, but between those two suggestions, I like the, the idea of the, um, the, um, the traffic camera. And I think, I mean, as long as we're allowed, I know there's some states, some localities are not allowed to do those, but I guess that would be a question for our attorney as to whether or not we're allowed to do that, but I have no problem with the traffic cameras. I would throw golf carts in there as well, then perhaps. I think it was personal interest, special interest, I should say.
And look, in a couple of weeks, when the city manager brings it back to committee, so we can have a further discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Madam Chair. Um, staff reports, city manager. Comments from citizens and delegates, um, you sus- if you've sustained a meeting, you'd like to address us, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business, remain to, uh, the city of Douglasville. Thank you. I don't see any, a couple of other things, I apologize, council members. Tomorrow at 11 o'clock, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, employee awards luncheon here at the conference center. And, um, city, uh, the code enforcement, I know we, uh, passed this a few, a couple of months ago or so, but December 1st started the, um, the canopies or the trailers for the tires. So all of the, the companies that have tires, they're supposed to put them in those, look like trailers or something, I'm not certain. But they should cover the tires. They do have a 60-day, uh, grace period in which to put those and close the tires up. But, um, it started December 1st. I wanted to remind council members, if you get any complaints, that, uh, that's supposed to happen within the city of Douglasville limits. Any other, uh, comments or concerns or questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention, uh, unless this date has changed, um, next Tuesday, the 15th, Parks and Recreation will be having a community, uh, input meeting virtually.
Yes.
Uh, at, uh, 6:30. So I'm assuming that's still on, but for those that, that are listening and would like to participate.
Mm-hmm. It's on my calendar, yes, sir. Any other announcements from council members? Okay, I know that we were trying to make it quick. Okay. Um, not seeing any other business then, this meeting is adjourned.